Are we on?
Yes.
Oh, I got the egg on one.
Well, it's not.
Did I say that?
Some kind of bark.
All right, call to order. Cohasset Board of Selectmen meeting. This is Tuesday night, December twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen, when only the lame of brain would hold a selectman's meeting. But we're here. Seven P M., it's the selectman's office in Cohasset Town Hall. First order of business this evening is, after the call to order, is the Fledge of Allegiance. So if you will, please rise and join me. The Fledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is a public comment, or any comment that you want to be off. Do we have any public comment this evening?
Do we have any public?
We have no public, we have no comment.
Seeing none, then we'll move right along to the next item on the agenda in advance, the lieu of borrowing. And for that, we have Paula O'Nair.
Hi, Gloria. Right, this is actually similar to ones you've signed in the past. There is already an authorized borrowing for one million thirty thousand dollars that has been approved for Ninety-One Sawyer Street and for the building in Fermissink. And what we are looking to do right now is to get authorization for an advance in lieu of borrowing, should we need to expend those funds before we get through the whole borrowing process that goes through bond council and several other steps. But since it's been authorized, we'll ask that you go ahead and sign that so we don't lose the deal. Um, we have a...
Once it's done, the deal, once it gets done, you mean? We were seeing that, how we doing?
Uh, the petition is still with the Attorney General's office, as far as I'm aware, being reviewed. So I'll try to get an update tomorrow. But the, uh, the bond, because there's a couple of other items, some sewer dead, if I recall, an ambulance.
Right, there's some bands out that might be rolling in and trying to take advantage of rates.
So we're gonna try to do that all in February. So we just want to have the money available now, so if the deal closes between now and then, the money will be available. In fact, we can also do some equipment purchasing now, as opposed to waiting.
In any event, it'll all be paid back June thirtieth, because that is required by law.
When the bond comes in, it gets paid out.
Right, yes.
And we have two point seven million in a stabilization fund.
We're not actually going to take it out in the stabilization, it's just...
But that's there.
Right, should we need to, if somehow we didn't borrow by June thirtieth, which would be... I can ever see us not doing that.
Once again, the totality is a million and thirty, period. So I thought we were considering, is this just for the senior citizens?
It's just the senior citizens.
For the bonding, the bonding may have other items.
We're gonna come back to you in February with more details on the bond issue itself. That will include other items.
Okay. All right, folks, I don't, I believe this actually does need a vote. So if I may, ask you for a motion on this one item, so long as there are no other questions.
Do you need the dollar amount in the motion?
Yes.
Okay. So I move that we approve an advance of one million and thirty thousand dollars in lieu borrowing?
Second, for the purposes of...
For the purposes of having cash available for possible purchase of Ninety-One Sawyer Street.
Is there a second? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. The second item on the agenda also stays with Paula, and that's the update, our financial update, for November, and as well, and an update of our investment accounts. This will be a quarterly review.
Right. Those investments, similar to the market, haven't been thrilling.
You could be kidding me.
Yes, they've been, you know, we have been beating our benchmarks all around. I mean, different organizations have their different benchmarks, but we seem to be consistently beating those. But that doesn't mean we haven't, we haven't, haven't, we're not having our ups and downs. And certainly that's where we're smack dab in the middle of that, and we continue to be. Um, I think probably, um, yeah, it varies too, depending on the funds that you're talking about. Obviously, the funds that are in, the more secure, safer investments had less volatility, as you would expect. But hopefully, things will get better. But we continue to monitor the performance, and we're also monitoring the IPS compliance, to make sure that they're not trying to compensate for, you know, for any of the gains or lack of gains by getting too aggressive. So then they're in, within those ranges as well.
Okay.
Let's see, the, like, for example, this fall, what you said, the OPEC fund was down four point five percent year for the quarter. The S and P, was the S and P down?
Um, for the quarter? Yeah. Yep.
And then, I don't have that listed. They have the composites, they, what they have to do is if they have certain amount in the S and P and certain amount in, like, bonds, they'll give kind of a blended benchmark.
Right.
And that's where those benchmarks are coming.
So the benchmarks come from the, from the S and P and the...
Different, different things that's actually listed there for each of the different funds.
Right.
Um, you have the total of fund, and then underneath it, there'll be a benchmark. Like, in the first one, it's S and P five hundred and also the market cap.
Gotcha, S and P, S and P, yeah.
So it's, the benchmark there is not just the S and P. It's a combination of things that somewhat mirror what the fund is trying to accomplish.
Yeah.
So if I look at this correctly, all of them outperform their benchmarks, is that fair to say?
That's, yeah.
Even though the, the performance wasn't very good, but they did a lot, they, they were less bad.
Well, one of, if I may, one of the things that may encourage not only the board, but anybody listening to this to recognize is that, yeah, no one, no one likes negative returns. Or, as they say in our business, you can't eat relativity. However, the secret, if there is a secret, to successful investing over time is being less bad. Because mathematically, it's actually, you can suffer a negative return, but so long as that negative return is managed below, or that is to say, at a lesser level than your benchmark, the recovery required is less aggressive. And that result of that is you don't have to be as aggressive to produce consistent returns. The fact that, you know, in some cases, you're a hundred basis points better, now, mind you, it's on a quarterly basis, but a year-to-date, you're as much as a hundred basis points, and in some cases, more than a hundred basis points better than the benchmark, is a very attractive accomplishment.
Correct. And, you know, as we move on, like, some of these numbers are just being filled in for the first time, because some of this hasn't been established for very long. So as we get three-year numbers out, we'll have a much better track record of how folks are doing and make any adjustments as necessary at that point.
Look, the, the longer funds, OPEC comes to mind, pension comes to mind, have to be viewed for the strategy over more than twenty years. And as, any given quarter, every, any given year, that may turn out to be uncomfortably volatile, will, will tend to blend with others that are, you know, uncomfortably enthusiastic years to come.
Correct.
It'll, it'll even know. Okay.
Any other questions?
None on this. Thank you very much, thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Okay. Next item up, and I love this, we're only twenty minutes ahead. Yeah, I'm thinking eight fifteen, okay? So, licenses, permits, and events. First item up is the Rotary Road Race. Do we have anybody here for that?
I don't believe we're expecting anybody tonight.
Good.
Yeah, Linda was gonna find out if I had the application available, but Denise Amondo, for this, was not able to make it. And I just want to let you know that I uploaded the completed application on, right now, it's up on the OneDrive. The signed off, they had a meeting today, Chief Sylvia was there, I believe.
For which...
The events, for both.
For both.
Yes.
Is it on the OneDrive?
So I uploaded the signed copies today, yeah.
Yeah.
And the insurance, it has to be closer to the event before they can provide it. So I don't know if we have any motion.
Just on the, on the Rotary Road Race, I'm gonna accuse myself, 'cause I'm a Rotarian.
Okay. Anybody else that wants to fess up?
Nah, I'm good.
Okay. All right. Are there any questions with respect to the Rotary Road Race? By the way, for the audience, the date of the Rotary Road Race is, the proposed date is April third, two thousand and sixteen.
I make a motion, we accept the application for the Cohasset Rotary Road Race by the C ten K, sponsored by the Rotary Club of Cohasset, on Sunday, April third, two thousand and sixteen.
A second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's move to a vote. All those in favor, they saved the fight by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, three to nothing.
One extension.
Three to nothing and one Rotarian. All right. And one extension. One, the second item is the Tour de South Shore Bike Ride. And as you said, there, you don't expect anybody for that this evening.
Yeah, Denise is not available to come.
Okay.
This is the McCourt Foundation.
Nothing has changed from prior years, or prior years, as we've seen.
Again, for the audience, the proposed date is October one, two thousand and sixteen. In this particular, the Tour de South Shore is a ride, a fundraiser for Alzheimer's, I assume Alzheimer's Research and M S. And by the looks of it, the, there is really nothing changed with respect to the event itself. No, no changes in the route, no change in the expected size.
What is the timing of that again, I apologize?
October one.
I know the, the time of day.
Hang on.
Is there a map, do we have a map, I don't think we have a map of the route. They're on three A, is that right?
I actually, oh, come on. I actually participated in this a couple of years ago. They start at approximately seven thirty in the morning over at Wapatack. They run a twenty-five mile loop that comes down Hull Street to Jerusalem Road, Atlantic Avenue through the Cove, and then out Border Street to Situage. They do a twenty-five mile ride and a fifty mile ride. Those folks that do the fifty mile ride go through that same twenty-five mile loop twice. So they come through Cohasset twice.
On that morning?
On that morning. Usually, the whole event is clear of Cohasset sometime around ten o'clock, ten, ten-thirty.
So they run through once around eight thirty, and then...
Usually, it's sometime right around eight o'clock that they come through the first time.
First time that I have, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's essentially along Atlantic Avenue and Jerusalem Road.
Jerusalem Road, Atlantic Avenue.
The seaside route to Border Street. And we've done that for six years now?
I believe it's five or six years, yes, yeah, it's six years. Yeah, we haven't, it's pretty much the same event, probably draws, well, three to four hundred people max. So it's, and that three to four hundred, again, spreads out pretty quickly because of the twenty-five and the fifty. So for those that aren't, you know, watching for it, it looks like a typical Sunday morning, yeah, Sunday morning in Cohasset, when everybody's riding their bikes on Jerusalem Road.
Just an aside, Tracy, if you would, I'd just suggest, and the board's in agreement, maybe we can direct it. For outside events like this, we, our application really should have a space for the time, the proposed timeframe. And I can't, I, I looked at it, can't find one. And she had laid, Denise had laid this out in her letter.
Well, right here, doesn't it say setup time?
Oh, you're gonna do that to me publicly, aren't you?
No, it says date and time, but they always say they don't put the time, you're right.
And setup and, setup and breakdown is different than the actual impact time, you know what I mean?
No, actually, you're right, it does. I actually, I saw the setup date, I didn't, I didn't see where it said time, and you're right, it does.
They don't put the time anyways, so you don't...
So it's just an idea for, for us and for any future board. But in any case, Denise had identified that in her, in her cover letter. All right, are there questions on this, further questions on this?
Yeah, the only comment I have is, there's no road closing, so if the M S and the McCourt Foundation can just emphasize to the riders to stay on the side of the road and try to keep the road open, so it doesn't look like they're just flowing down the whole road itself.
The whole lane. Actually, yeah, that's fine. If the board's in agreement, I'd ask Tracy to, when you send a follow-up note, or if you send a follow-up note, to make that note in, or to make that, that point known in the follow-up note. I recognize they're, they're riding through three towns.
Yeah, actually, four, four towns. A little piece at home.
And each of them have fairly narrow roadways, so.
And they do do a safety briefing before they, before they leave in the morning, so it's, it's pretty well handled that way.
When, when there's a lot of them, sometimes I think the road's closed, and it's...
Yeah, it's, I guess that's maybe the better way to phrase it for, for the entity is that we're not closing roads, so, you know, make sure that that's emphasized to the riders as well. Okay.
Yeah, all the departments have signed up on this. Fire, whoever, I didn't see that.
Gas, the fire department, right here.
No, it's on the OneDrive, I don't have it up there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I know it's up there, yeah.
Okay. May I have a motion?
I move we accept the Tour de South Shore Saturday tour first of two thousand and sixteen, sponsored by the McCourt Foundation, for the ride for Alice Anderson and M S.
A second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are you, are you holding back?
I said aye.
Oh, okay, yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, aye.
Four zero. Okay.
Next item is...
Committee appointments. What's that?
You're all waiting for me?
Congratulations, it's one.
It's approved? Yeah.
But having, having said that, now that you're here...
I am so sorry, she said seven thirty, I thought it was early.
Oh, don't worry, way ahead of schedule.
Very fast tonight. Okay. We had a lot of cookies, so we're coming really, really fast. Okay.
No, but, but since you're here, we will pass along one item to, to you.
Yes.
And we've been advised by the chief that you hold a rider's safety briefing before...
Yes.
No?
Wait, I see different...
Never mind.
I thought you were talking about meeting with police.
You're done.
I'm doing all that. How long have you been waiting for me?
We haven't, actually.
We didn't, we just, we just kept rolling. Oh, you're done.
I'm, I'm sorry to say that we weren't aware that you were coming.
You weren't, and you, okay, well, thank you. Anything you want to know?
You've got, you've got some credibility with the, with the committee.
All right, happy holidays, everybody. For the cookies.
Want to just pitch it or something, or say how great it is?
No, I, no, I will tell you that we're going to dedicate it to Tommy Wigmore this year. So unfortunately, since I've been race director, we've had a lot of losses of people that we love, and so we've put his initials on the shirt. I, I need to meet with Dee, but, you know, I'll ask her to hold the break tape, and we'll have a presence there, maybe people will walk in his honor, so that's true. But I have nothing else, other than it's the fortieth anniversary, so I hope maybe anybody hasn't done it. Yeah.
Wow.
So it's gonna be, it'll be fun.
It's a pretty big deal.
Yeah, so if you haven't run, or you haven't walked, do it. How's that? Let me get a towel.
I'm gonna pay details, so I'll...
Yeah. Chris and I have to...
Cookie, anyone, all right, happy holidays.
And to you.
Just one question, is it, can one register at this point?
So I was waiting to open registration until I got approval from my town.
Wasn't she good?
And so now that we have approval, within the next, before New Year's, I'll open registration, and I'll let everybody know. Okay?
That's great.
Great, thanks, Linda.
Uh, thank you, happy holidays. Okay, I love you all. All right. Hey, happy holidays, chief.
Okay.
Goodbye.
All right. Next item on the, yes?
No, I just wanted to update the board that Paul and I met about an event policy. So at some point in January, either the first meeting or second meeting, we'll have something crafted for us to discuss at a meeting.
Okay.
I might recommend you jump into this, like, when updates, because I believe the library trustees are coming tonight, so...
Is anybody coming from Elder Affairs?
I don't believe so, because, you know, that's just, that's just strictly a selectman appointment. You could do that.
Yeah, let's, let's tackle, let's tackle that, because I don't think the library trustees will require extra time, but we can circle back to it, if everybody's in agreement.
Sure.
Okay. We have an appointment on the Board of Elder Affairs from an associate member to a full member. And the associate member, excuse me. The associate member being, being promoted, not promoted, I guess, appointed, is Taffy Nauf-Nagle. Okay? You find her background and C V here in, in OneDrive. Taffy, as you all know, has been very deeply involved in the town in a variety of functions, but most recently with respect to the Housing Authority. And has, of course, been an associate member on Elder Affairs for a bit. Does anyone have any questions or comments with respect to this appointment?
I agree with your comments, I've been to a few meetings, and she's made a great contribution. She's very active at the meetings and participates eagerly, so...
How long is the appointment?
Well, if we get this done, probably thirty seconds.
Come on, that was good, that was good, you gotta work with me on this.
It's filling an unexpired term.
I...
I don't recall.
I believe it's another year, and I just remember that from a previous communication.
I believe we just appointed her, so...
No, no, this replaces, it's filling an unexpired term.
Oh, right, 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 right. We need to know that for them. Do you have a town report yet? I had it to bring.
Okay, so, okay, so this position will be up for reappointment at the, at the beginning of the new fiscal year. Okay?
I move that we appoint Taffy Nauf-Nagle to the unexpired term that will expire.
Excuse me, I just looked at it again. So she's replacing Harry, so it goes until June, two thousand and eighteen.
Okay.
Her term will expire to this June.
Okay.
So it's...
All right.
So it's two thousand and eighteen.
So the appointment would be through June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
A second.
All right. For comments, questions? All right. All those in favor? Aye? Four zero? Yes.
Does, does this mean that there's a associate position available?
Yes.
Until June thirtieth.
Until June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen, okay.
All right. Take the town manager's suggestion, and we'll jump ahead to selectman comments and circle back to the library trustees when they arrive. So, let's start with that. Kevin?
Kudos to the Alternative Energy Committee. State came out with the Green Energy Awards for this year, for this year. And it seems like we just approved our town, where they went through all their effort and their work and got it approved, but they awarded Cohasset a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars as being the green energy, for our green energy commitment. And so the Green, Alternative Energy Committee's been here several times, and they really shepherded and pushed this for a long time. We got some pretty quick rewards on that, so congratulations to that committee, and I think that's wonderful. And we have until, I guess, January fifteenth to put in an application for how we're gonna use it. And so I think that's just the beginning of a lot of great things, so I'm glad we've done that.
January twenty-second.
January fifteenth, I think, or was it twenty-second?
Yeah, that's from the director. But that's, the point is, it's still the same, Kevin, you had read in that, great work by the committee.
And there was a lot of staff worked on this as well, so it was really collaborative effort, was spearheaded by the Alternative Energy folks, really. This, we're now an official green community, so we join the Green Community Partnership of Massachusetts, and the instant, the instant reward is the grant that Kevin spoke of. So the first goal will be to, I think, the first project on the radar at the moment is to convert the streetlights to LED, for our ownership, so something to move it on.
Hey, by the way, that's a very good point, I certainly didn't mean to shortchange the staff as well. Great work on both parts. Would, would you, I forwarded this email to you and to Tracy, would you take that? Because I, I'm assuming that's the official alert.
Yes.
Okay. Make sure that it gets to Sean and to...
Sean has it.
Okay, good.
It seemed to have gone out in multiple directions this morning, so...
Okay, fine.
Yes. So there you go, so everyone's got it now.
So it's, fair enough.
Good news channels fast.
Okay. All right. Kevin, anything else?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
I don't have anything, I've been kind of out of touch, except to wish everybody happy holidays and a very peaceful two thousand and sixteen. Looking forward to the new year.
I was at the rectory meeting, organizing pretty much the rest of the buildout, and we're working with the library trust as well to try to make amends to have a joint use of the building, of the building space above the entranceway.
Great. I, for, I mean, it seems like ages ago now, but I don't know how many else, how many of you were there, but I did go for the, go down to the stroll, which I have to say was handled with great enthusiasm, it was quite a crowd there. And I challenge ourselves, and just as importantly, anybody else that was interested in working, or would be interested in working with the Chamber of Commerce, to really pull the downtown together for that. And I say the downtown, and actually, it's every, every single merchant in town. But the one thing that I did notice about the stroll is it tends to center right on South Main Street and just, just outside of it. And yet, there are, you know, there are a few shops further down that certainly could be pulled into it. And as much as the merchants attempted to, I should say that the chamber attempted to pull merchants in from, you know, from, away from the village, they weren't there. And that was, I think, those merchants lost. Among the many that I can think would have an enormously attractive fit would be, would be operations like Bunnies. So my point is, however, that it was really nice to see such an enthusiastic outpouring. So that's it for me. Okay.
She ran away. If you want, I could start my presentation, or you can go to minutes, and I could check with Carolyn to see if, when her board will be here.
Let's, I don't want to, I don't, I'd rather not interrupt your presentation. And so I'd rather take it on full, if we can. Let's skip ahead to the minutes, all right? And have, have each of you had an opportunity to look at them?
Yes. We're not gonna take much time, because they're practically perfect.
Practically.
Just like Mary Poppins.
Okay.
I approve, I, um...
You approve, okay, we're done.
They are nearly perfect.
Well, he's moving into the executive spot.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes, December eighth, two thousand and sixteen, for selectmen.
Second.
Okay. Any, any discussion whatsoever? All right. Then in that case, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Wow. We're good to go.
Shall we?
Yes.
You ready?
Please, look, we're...
I love a December meeting, huh? Yeah. Especially this week. Yes. It was a strategy.
Just so everybody knows, with us now is Carolyn Coffey from the Library Board of Trustees, here to propose a candidate to fill an unexpired term. of Trustees, uh, here to propose, uh, a candidate to fill an unexpired term.
Uh, one of our Library Trustees whose term expires in May has moved to Holland and is therefore not eligible to serve any longer. Somebody named Elaine Breslow, who has lived in Cohasset for 20 years, raised her children here. She had been very involved with the PSO and, um, did, was head of their publicity and, um, and then subsequently restarted the Cohasset Arts Boosters, um, and was very involved in helping them along. And when I approached her and asked her if she was interested in getting involved in the library as a lifelong learner, she talked to me for quite a long time about what would be involved and, um, and I was thrilled that she was interested. Several other trustees know her, support her 100%, and with our endorsement, um, the rest of the board unanimously, uh, approved, uh, her coming on board through May when she would then run.
Okay. Have each of you had an opportunity to look over Elaine's CV?
Yes.
Okay.
And, um, I have a question and a comment.
Please do.
Um, so my question is, is this a joint, um, joint vote to appoint her since it is an elected position?
Yes.
Okay. So they'll need a quorum before we vote?
You, you, I mean, yes. Yes and no. Okay, if, if, if they don't, you could still move ahead with a majority of the selectmen and they've already expressed their unanimity, so I think you're probably...
And we will have a quorum. I told them to come at 7:40 because we were on the agenda for this.
What, do you have seven members?
I just wanted to make sure we didn't jump the gun. We have eight. Um, we have eight now, so we'd need five, right?
Oh, you have five. Okay. You have nine then. You're nine.
We would be nine with Elaine.
Yeah. Well, quorum is the majority, is the majority of the appointed, not the members sitting, the number of how many.
Seats. We've got four here.
Four?
We just need one more. We need one more. And, um, just...
Are you up for tap dancing?
To entertain you until the next one comes.
Well, no, I was actually just gonna ask, um, if you, if you have a moment, could you update us and the audience as well with some of the initiatives that you, that trustees are considering?
Uh, sure. Um, right now, we're going through our five-year strategic plan. Uh, we are interviewing, uh, between 50 and 100 people in the community to get a sense of what they think we're doing well, what they think we could do better, and what would make the library the best resource for our community. You know, what, what would draw them if they're not users? What would make them use it more if they are users? Um, and it's been a lot of fun collecting that information. We are also working with the Rec Department to figure out, at least in the immediate future, how to share the space that our world has, um, given to, given up for the town use. And, um, have been working very well with them and, um, and have started some conversations with professionals to get some ideas for how best to use the inside space and to make the outside space work with the inside space, um, from a safety and access perspective. So we had preliminary discussions with the CPC a couple of weeks ago to see if, if that was a good fit to get some engineering drawings for the parking lot and handicap access and that sort of thing. So we are starting, we're very much in the planning stages, but it's going very well. And we'll be doing some focus groups in January and then completing our strategic plan. And hopefully, everything will kind of be coming together at the same time.
And I, it may, it may sound silly to ask the question, but are you continuing with author talks?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. It's become quite a popular series.
It really has. Yeah.
Can you tip your hand, like, who's, who's on the docket?
Uh, we have the schedule printed out through May and...
No, 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 talk about the stuff that no one knows about.
Um, no, that's, it's all printed out. Um, I don't know who's, um, with whom they're having conversations for next year, uh, because they do start the planning already.
Oh, I would imagine.
So I, I can't, can't reveal anything because I'm not in the know myself.
All right. I can say that I had the privilege of being interviewed by Carolyn for these strategic plans, so a nice conversation about, about the library and, uh, so it was good. It was, I think it's a great process that they go through, actually. It's a really, uh, it's a really good idea.
I remember, right, it's, um, other than, other than quarterly tax payments, it's the most visited building in town. Other, well, not, not clearly schools, but you have to go there. Uh, all right. We're just waiting on one, right? Wouldn't you know it, you have one person that's punctual.
Um, Mary Lou. Does someone have Mary Lou's? Can you text her and tell her to come, to break away?
That's all right. We, we're...
I, I wanted to just comment on Elaine. I've worked with Elaine on both PSO and also on Arts Boosters for years, and she is terrific and very lucky that she's willing to jump in and help out the library. Kind of probably stole her from some other possible boards, but she's terrific.
I was thrilled. And, and part of her conversation with me, she's like, "Look, you know, I don't mean to grill you, but if I'm gonna do this, I wanna do it right, so I wanna know what I'm getting myself into." This is good. That's what you want.
When, um, when does this term expire?
May.
So this...
Yay, perfect timing.
Potential, okay. Fair enough.
We have a quorum now. Elaine isn't here yet.
Well, um...
If you just wanna, if, if we just pull, I'll be pulling a couple of seats up and we'll, uh...
So you can ask her directly, so she's a regular registered voter for two years.
Should have.
I think it's on the, on the application anyway.
Yes, it is. Are you a registered voter in Cohasset? Yes, she replied.
This is a busy one for two.
No, she texts me, I mean, I know she's coming.
Yeah, yeah. We're just, we're, we're ahead of schedule.
It'll be like a surprise party.
Congratulations.
Well, anyway.
So I need to call our meeting to order, um, so the Library Trustees are now in order.
Okay. Um, do you wanna move ahead? I, I know that the candidate is not here.
I don't think the candidate needs to be here. I think you already said last things about her, so. Unless you wanna add anything. All right.
All right. May I have a motion from our board?
I move that we, um, um, I, I'm trying to figure out if that's the right word, right? We appoint, that we appoint Elaine Breslow to the Library Trustees through, um, the election in May 2016?
Yeah, to fill the unexpired term.
Fill the unexpired term.
Second.
Okay. Vote of the Board of Selectmen. Uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay.
And now I will do the same. Could I please have a motion to, um, appoint, to approve of Elaine Breslow, filling Jim Sandell's unexpired term as a Library Trustee through May? So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Wow. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Back to, back to a semi-full house, right?
Carolyn, I just have one question. Remind me, um, there was another trustee, um, that relocated.
Teresa Palermo, was that Roger Philt first?
And Roger Philt, we did that before.
And ironically, both of their terms are up this May.
Oh, wow.
So, um, so now they can... Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming up.
Oh. Do you, do you want another chair?
Yeah, go ahead. Oh, yes.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Town Manager, should, should the newly appointed, uh, Library Trustee, uh, walk in in the middle of your presentation? We will interrupt you to welcome her.
Okay.
Okay?
Unless they intercept her.
Right, I know, that's what I'm worried about, yeah.
All right. Now we'll move on to the Town Manager's update. And Chris is going to focus this update on a six-month review of our goals and objectives for both the Town Manager and the Board of Selectmen separately broadly.
So, this has also been uploaded to the OneDrive, so if you'd like to watch it on the OneDrive, you can. Um, so, we thought, not only have you asked for this, but I think it's a very good thing to do, is to give a, a mid-year objective update. I think we'd like to do one, uh, one in March to do a three-quarter. And it was, by the way, it was very productive for, for staff and it was most certainly, I think, it would be good for all those that are there, so. So, mid-year update. Uh, four primary goals were established for the Town Manager, me, by the board. Develop, uh, communicate, and I'm kind of condensing them a little bit. I will talk about it in a little bit. Develop communication strategies, internal and external. Enhance services delivery, space needs and human resources. Protect and enhance financial stability and continue to advance current town priorities. The Board of Selectmen identified five goals for themselves. Evaluate the need for the master plan. Observe building and infrastructure assessment. Refine and strengthen committee structure of the town. Protect and enhance financial health. And oversee development of the communications plan. As you can probably gather from looking at these, there's a fair amount of overlap. So, um, I can't take credit for making the Venn diagram, but, so we have some Venn diagram, but if you look, so what? Uh, these, these all kind of pop right in there and are combined. The communication strategies overlap, protecting and enhancing financial stability overlap, advancing current town priorities overlap. I only put the master plan, senior center in there as examples of those. And building and infrastructure clearly overlap. There are some that kind of fall on each side. Refining and strengthening the committee structure is really more selective on, obviously there to support that. And, uh, human resources and procurement upgrades are really more procedural and operational, so they're more full, uh, full outside that Venn diagram circles. So, you can see the vast majority of these are kind of collaborative or at least things that we've jointly established for each other. So let me start off with communication strategy. So, the first, the first bullet, as I say, by the way, before I jump in, does anybody wanna stop me at any point? Okay? The first was to evaluate and establish a strategy for external communications. So here are some bullet points of things that have happened over the last six months and will be happening. I think the first thing that, as we talked internally, was that we needed to dedicate some staff resource to this. While the Town Manager and others certainly have played a role in this, it's something that requires some degree, I think, of regular focus. And as much as I'd like to do that, it's just not, it's not possible. Again, you know, I talked to the press and I talked to other folks, but it, it, I can't, I need the town's press secretary or spokesman on, on every matter. There's just too much time involved. So, I sat down with Lisa and we developed a job description and we identified a staff member. That staff member is Jen Orm. Uh, and you already saw her at last meeting, um, so she happens to have a degree in communications, worked in radio once upon a time, telling you about her past here, uh, and really has done a great job in constituent service for a long time. So she, and she, she loves Facebook, so she's really, she's actually really well-positioned to take this on as a chunk of responsibility. As fate would have it, we're also in the process of transitioning her from secretary to the BZA, something, ZBA, she's something she's been for a long time, and that's moving downstairs into our, uh, inspectional services unit. So that'll free up a chunk of her time, because right now, the ZBA does take up a fair chunk of her time, just the paperwork, the filings, the meetings. So as that transitions out, starting in January, she'll start to have, January, February, she'll have more time. So that transition of responsibility is kind of starting now. Uh, another, so that'll all, that's really looking to be a second, a, a second half FY2016 really focused. One of the things that was done this past year, though, we created an email called TownManager@CohassetMA.org, something that Jen and Tracy both look at regularly. So, my, those emails get vetted every single day by them, and sometimes things are resolved by them without ever reaching me. I mean, they do put me in, in the loop. Go ahead.
So that's great. And, um, has that been sort of publicized that that's available?
It's on the website. So if somebody goes to the website and they try to look for my email, that's what they're gonna find.
They're not gonna find Christine here.
Yeah, they can still use, I mean, that still exists. And it's pretty, it's pretty widely known, so, uh, it's, people still use that. But this is the official email on the website now. And it's been used and, and, and it's funny, some people use both, so it's...
Just in case.
Just in case. But sometimes, sometimes people use it for one thing and they use the other one for another. I, I don't quite understand that yet. Because again, there are things that come to me that, you know, I, I don't wanna open my, my mailbox up to, you know, in general, because I got, I got 100 emails at that, so. But this has been helping, because by making this the official contact point for state agents and things like that, it actually allows it to be vetted. For example, if I'm out of the office or something, Jen and Tracy can see something. And for example, we got something today. So Tracy pulled it out and Brian Joyce and I sat down. It had to do with the Cunningham Bridge. So it was, it was good that it went to a central location like that. Um, Cohasset Connects is another piece of the external communication strategy which we rolled out last meeting. You saw, it's, it's another avenue for people to communicate with the town and the town to communicate back. So it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a living, breathing, growing entity. And then the fiscal forecasting forms are just an example of how public, you know, external forms really are another vehicle for going back and forth. And I, I think it's, I think they've been very successful. And I think those could be replicated in other ways, um, and, and they're gonna continue to grow. We've just agreed to, we're extending them through the spring. So I think that's an example of those kind of public interactions. As much as social media and all, we really need to play more in, I think that nothing beats face-to-face contact. It just doesn't, particularly in a town like ours where we can, you can actually have that kind of contact. So these are just some examples, I, so I think that we've had a, you know, we, we've done some, we've done some, some work.
What about on social media? I agree with your comment, but I mean, what, uh, what are we doing to build that?
We are actually about to work, and again, this is some things that I'll be announcing in January, but you'll get a little head start. So the Cohasset Connects is one piece. There's something called Nextdoor. It's, it's another social media site that's becoming, um, more prominent. And it's, it's geographically based. It's about community, literally as opposed to communities online. It's really about your community, connecting, you know, with your neighbors and other civic institutions and all in your community where you live, uh, not just where you reside on the internet. Where we, I, I had contact with these folks out, um, when I was at the, uh, ICM, the International City County Management Association. It's booming. We actually have a group of folks in Cohasset that are already part of it. So we're about to roll that out softly and then officially in January.
So we are gonna do that?
Yes. We gotta roll out. Uh, no, we also don't have a Cohasset Facebook page. We have lots of Coha, there's lots of Facebook pages that deal with Cohasset, but there's no central page. So one of the things where I, I'd like to have Jen work on is creating a central page that people can, can reach. The police, the police page kind of defaulted to that, but the police page is not an appropriate place for Rec, you know, and Elder Affairs, and, you know, it's really, should be more public safety oriented. So I, I think that we're gonna try to grow that.
To be a page on the internet or a Facebook page?
Yeah, Facebook page.
Would be a Facebook page, yeah.
I like to have Cohasset a Facebook page.
So we are gonna do that?
Yeah. As a plan, that's a, that's a, that's an early 2016 plan. Um, and we're also looking at possibly, we have a couple of, and I won't go into all the details of it, we have a couple of departments that have had their own, that are not terribly robust, so we will likely roll those into this page.
Good.
And then, um, you know, we'll use that as a platform. So again, another thing is Nextdoor and Facebook Communicate. So, so, uh, the goal will be to be able to push information out so they can cover, you don't have to do it two, three, four times.[1652.88] You start in one place, you push it out.
Good.
And also, by the way, another piece is the website. We'll talk a little bit about in a minute, but that's not on here, but that's something that, it's also on the list. We need to upgrade this to be mobile. So, we've been talking internally about that as well. The other side of this is evaluating the funding structures for internal communication. So, among the things that have happened internally, I've started regular small group meetings. We do quarterly, you know, all management meetings. But those, you know, and those are great, but they're kind of unwieldy. We can't do those monthly. And, so I, I've taken it, I have regular finance meetings, I've had regular public works meetings. I know a few regular, what I guess we could call, human service meetings. It's with, with health, I'm sorry, with rec and library and elder affairs. Lisa's been doing much the same. Our schedules have been, not make it very easy, but Chief Quigley, Chief Sylvia and I have been trying to get together periodically. And we see each other anyway, but just to more, to formalize that a little bit more a couple of times a month. And I think that's been very helpful. We've established a tighter schedule protocol for me. So, it, so Tracy is my gatekeeper. And as a result, it's actually tightened up my meeting schedule. I think it's made it more effective. It's still a quirk every once in a while, but it's been, I think, much more effective. I hope you've found that that way too.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I can't get in. I have to come up with some excuse just to have a meeting.
And, we've also tried to expand town email access to more boards and committees. I think that helps facilitate communication flow. So, it also puts on the same platforms, so we don't have to worry about FOIA requests and record keeping. So, we are trying to expand that out. Another thing I've done is expand regular means with union leadership. I just think it's healthier. I actually did that with my Public Safety unions the other day. And, we're trying to, you know, now that we've come out of the cycle of negotiations, I still want to meet on a regular basis. Doesn't have to be every month necessarily, but at least every quarter. Just so we talk. I mean, and I see some more than others. And particularly with our Public Safety officers, they're, they're in the field a lot. I just found that regular face-to-face contact is just very effective. It helps head off rumors and keeps you better tied in. I had a nice meeting with our Public Safety, the police union folks the other day. So, and we just, you know, it, it, there was a, there were, there were a couple of issues, but more of it was just, just talking, which I think is very helpful. Yeah, I think it's very helpful.
Just a question on the, on the email access to boards and committees. To me, that's a real priority. I don't know whether it's difficult or, you know, why we just can't put everybody on one fell swoop.
The problem is that our platform is not as vibrant as it should be. And we've been talking a lot about that. So, we are making an effort at trying to enhance our email capabilities. So, it really wasn't designed for this. I mean, you know, it, it, it's outlawed, but it's not, it's not commercialized.
Right.
So, it's something that we're talking. Plus, our, our network, which we'll talk about a little bit more, is, is not.
Robust.
It's not robust. It's very, it's very fractured. So, it's not, I'd like to, all the, all of the permitting boards are now, have I email access to my knowledge? So, we're trying to expand that out. Now, also part of the communication strategies was fiber technology plan. Again, technology is communications to a large extent now anyway, so. And I, I'm sorry, actually, I forgot to fix the, you know, the, the CIO should be to the left there. They're, they're, they're not, CIO's not a sub-bullet HR. So, the HR director's working on a technology use policy. We've been working on this, she's been working on this now for a while. And there's been a lot of internal communications going on. For example, we've been talking about cell phones. When you're driving, you shouldn't use them. And I know that state law technically says you can, but I'm not particularly interested in defending an insurance claim because someone was on a cellphone and crashed the car. So, we've been having conversations about that. Some of our folks are a lot more amenable to it than others, and I won't go into the details of that. And we've also, so, we've been having a very robust conversation about what should be in that and how should, how should be done.
So, your conversation is more encompassing than just content of your communication?
Correct. It's the use of the technology itself. Because we realized that was as much of a piece as the content. And content's important too, don't get me wrong. One of the things, so, I discovered the other day, not because I was looking to go drinking or anything, but I realized that, that I couldn't see a winery website. Because our, our security filters are now up. They were not. They had not been functioning, should say that, but they were, they weren't. So, they're up, our, our filters are now in place. They were not there before. So, it's a block me from, liquor, alcohol forbidden.
So, there are websites that can't be accessed by staff on town computers.
And that was not the case before, because the firewalls were not up to date. But Ron has done all of that work. So, and I, there's other things that I don't plan to test that I'm sure you can't get to either, which is good to know that those things there, right?
No file sharing sites.
No, no, no. I'm not looking at trade music or an eBay, you know, or an eBay business. And, so again, so Lisa's been working with Ron on the technology policy. Because the, the, the technology is as much as, as the content. So, the CIO is working on an updated fiber technology plan anyway. So, and we've actually started to roll out to Capitol. We did that just last Wednesday. And there were, I think there were three pieces of it that are really communication focused. They don't necessarily seem it, but the fiber loop is foundational. We really need a townwide, town-owned fiber loop. And that will allow us to move our own data, which is voice as much as it is pictures and sound and numbers and letters. For the robustness and security of the network as much as anything else. And, so a plan has been proposed and it's now being discussed with Capitol. So, it's a fairly robust plan, which I think will, will bring us to the 21st century and beyond.
How long will it take to implement such a plan?
It could be, we can have a fiber loop up and running by next summer. So, if a town meeting approves the funding in May, it could be constructed and up and running by September 1st.
And what roughly would be the cost?
Well, it's still being debated. There's two aspects to it. There's the running of the cable, the fiber itself, and then the switches to make it one. And that's, so, the new telecommunications system would rely on that. So, we put, you know, we've been talking about a new phone system forever, right? You have to make 12-digit dialing to call anybody. And, it's not a, it's not an effective matter to communicate with our residents or also to support our processes. The savings, and Ron has been working on this, the return on investment by eliminating phone lines, by eliminating, right now, we have at least nine internet access points. Because that's what we have to have. We'd be down to two. We wouldn't need to have all the firewalls, because we only have two portals. The savings in maintenance, management and fees are real. So, the fiber loop itself could pay for itself in five to 10 years. Just in hard dollar.
What would that connect? It would connect, I mean.
All the core town buildings.
Everything and.
The, the full-blown plan would include water, DPW, Harbor Master. And we have a, not one repeater tower on.
Situation. DPW would connect.
DPW would connect to DPW.
So, it really would connect the entire town?
Correct.
This seems to me this would have a favorable security impact. And, you know, we'd be self-contained. In case there was any kind of disasters, we would be able to really communicate with our, all amongst ourselves, right? In this town. Am I wrong?
No, you're, no, you're correct. And in fact, the conversation, again, we, we rolled out the plan, Ron and I sat with Capitol budget on Wednesday. Because it's gonna take time to digest. I mean, the ask is, it's a big ask. And we're not gonna have to pay, we're not gonna pay for it in one year. And then we'll probably have to stretch the payments out over a few, but I think the conversation needs to be had. We need to, this is not something you can ban it. Just, just do it, get it installed, and then it's in, and then you can build off it.
And we're really right into the 21st century doing that. We will can build off of a platform. Sounds to me similar to when they were laying the large fiber optic cables in the 90s that essentially created the basis for the internet, right? I mean, on a smaller scale, that's what we're creating, isn't it? So, to me, this really is putting us into the 21st century.
Cohasid.
Well, yeah, it's, it's long been identified as the single biggest weakness we have in technology. Because it does provide, much like the foundation of a house, it provides the stable base on which everything else is laid. So, as Chris is pointing out, that's not just the ability to use wireless, which then hits the, hits the loop and accesses the internet. Or Tracy's computers or, or yours. But it also carries phone communication, patches through cell if necessary. It is, like I said, it's the foundational piece. And I remember, five years ago, when this was presented to the board as selectmen, the, the cost at the time was estimated about a half a million dollars. And I think it's less than that now.
It is.
Has it gone down with this?
It's gone down.
Well, it's gone down and, and there are pieces that are already in place, which I think are, you know, part of that. The schools actually have a fiber loop, so they could be joined into it.
So, would we join that or create a new one that would be fiber?
Well, that's, I think that's, that, not to take any thunder away from there. I think that's really up to the CIO to determine how best to use what structures we have now. But the, you know, as Chris is pointing out, this is, you, you start to look around and say, okay, well, you know, we need dump trucks, we need fire trucks, we need ambulances, we need this. And, but if we can't talk to each department, if we can't exchange in a speedy manner the data that each of us has and makes the other more effective. Then shiny new toys don't much matter.
Right. And one of the things that Diana's brought up before, and others as well, to move, for example, to credit card access at the transfer station. Well, you don't have a stable internet connection up there. And you think, well, just have a square. Well, squares need, well, and it's not, you know, as we all know, because of the town's topography. It, you know, cellular access can be very chippy. And, but if we had a fiber loop up, a, a, a landline connection, we can create our little wifi space. Boom, we're there. Same thing with security. We can then run camera feeds and we can monitor the site. We can see who's properly using things and who's not. And we could probably go even far, even further beyond that.
Wow.
Yeah, so I, I think there's a real value to it. For the Harbor Master, for example, you know, having a connection, not only could things be managed more tightly. There's a whole camera system, you know, that's set up on the docks. So, during, whenever, Lori can watch the whole portal harbor for safety purposes from her office, but you can't monitor from anywhere else. You know, it doesn't, it doesn't pipe it from home, the police station or any other place. If we had an internet, a fiber loop connection up there, we could. Plus, what if we wanted to put a little public wifi site over the harbor? We could do that. You know, we, we can't now, but we could.
We could create hotspots.
Create hotspots around town, in fact.
And so also, this would be a loop that someone from a remote place could then plug, if you had the passwords, could plug into this through the internet? Is that the?
Yeah.
Yeah, it really is quite interesting, fascinating.
But what it really does is it simplifies, again, you can hear a lot more about this.
Yes.
So, that you're getting a taste of it now. So, but this is, this is in progress. The, the concepts are in progress. And again, the, the, so, the fiber loop is foundational and the, and the switches to go with it. The telecommunication, the telecommunications system, the phone system builds off that. And again, the same with an upgraded website or web portal is the same, the same thing. That it needs this to really work. Then we could do maybe more online payments and more online permitting and really have flow back and forth.
You know, one of the big savings, we had a switch over from a thousand different lines in our company. A single access comes in. We saved on just sheer number of phone lines that were, there's a fee for each phone line. And it was remarkable, the savings on that alone.
There's definitely some of that that would happen here. We just, that's still being vetted, you know. The records are not as crisp as we'd like them to be, but there's absolutely hard annual dollar savings for the schools in the town, just on phone lines. And internet connections and firewalls and stuff like this. Real, real genuine savings. Communication with the board is something else that was raised as a priority, and I think that, I think we've done a pretty good job. Again, but you're continuing to vet. So, we started off the year with tablets, right? This is the, I think, one of the biggest improvements in communication we've had with all of you. The amount of paper we generate is vastly less. And, and, and I think we're doing more preparation. At, at your, excuse me, your, your all request, hearing procedures. When we had our hearings, we did a lot of prep in advance of that, memos, to try to do more informational updates. And again, as, as some of these other things have come off my plate, I'm kind of trying to do more and more of these. And again, we're doing, I think, more elaborate financial reports and summaries. So, I hope that's all been positive, but I think we're trying to increase the flow of information to all of you in the format in which it is. If you have any other thoughts or ideas, please feed them back. Is that fair to say that it's been better?
Yes.
In terms of my time as an individual selectman, this has helped so much. Because I don't have to go, I don't have to file everything. So, if I want to look at our goals and objectives, I don't have to have had to file it, because I can go right to the OneDrive and find it. So, that's, that's been terrific for us, all the work that's gone.
So, I'd imagine a fiber loop doing those for every committee, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, that's, so these are, these are, now, on the communications side, now on, on that selectmen's side. There's two. Now, the second one's kind of critical, supporting all the initiatives that I'm trying to roll out, which I, I will echo you've all done, so thank you very much. The one more unique one you had for yourself is developing training programs for new committee members. And I know that's something that's been talked about. So, that's still a to-do topic. So, so you can put it on your list. We'll talk about it more later. Protect and enhance financial health is obviously a very important one. Here are some of the action items that were laid out. Continue progress on identifying and addressing future liabilities. Well, OPEP work continues. In fact, we just got the, the most recent version of the OPEP actuary report, which is, the, the, some of the challenges, because things change in the real world. We're outweighed by the savings we did, so, which is good. So, we made progress. It's gonna show real work. As we talked about it on the fiscal forecast, and we're trying to enhance our tools for monitoring and projections like healthcare. We're building databases that allow us to know what our costs are in a much more individualized way than we ever had before. It's not just a global number in the budget. It's Joe has this plan and Jane has this plan and Jeff doesn't have a plan and could be a liability down the road. So.
I mean, that's so important, because if my memory is correct, I mean, the healthcare portion of our budget is over 4.3 million, which is, what, about 10% of our.
It's the single largest benefit cost.
It's the single largest, well, it's the single largest, yeah, cost.
Outside of salaries.
Yes, outside salaries. And it grows at a rate of six or eight percent a year, so. And that's really the statewide, nationwide policy though, that needs to be, something needs to be done about the increasing cost of healthcare costs. But anyways, I think.
But the better we have a handle on it.
The better we watch it, the better, yeah.
I already have. Trust me.
Pursue a bond rating with a goal of AAA designation. So, the financial teams have developed these strategies with our financial advisor for months. And, we're going to be meeting with the S and P bond rating team early in 2016. So, we are pursuing that. Again, I can't promise you it's gonna happen, but we're putting all our bucks in a row and doing everything possible. So, we actually have a whole plan to have them come into town and early in the year and really show them a good time, fiscally speaking.
Try not to do the other.
Yeah. Well, it's Cohasid, there's a lot of so much you could do here, right?
That just brought, made me remember the audit report. Is that something that comes out January?
January 12th, you'll be coming in to talk.
Great.
That gets, that just got wrapped today. So, the numbers, but we had a, there was a lag because of the county. They finally got their numbers in place. And there was a delay on our OPEP piece, that's, that's in place. So, we, I literally signed off on it today. Continue review of financial policies, another action item. Well, the employee, an employee review of travel policy was just implemented this month, this past month. That didn't rise to your level for approval. That was more of an internal document. First time we ever had that. And reserve and free cash policies are in development. We plan to roll them in front of the board in January for adoption.
Right.
Some updates on those. We've been working on those as well. But, with everything else going on this, this, this month, it just didn't seem a good time to do it. So, it'll, it'll be an early. Implement fraud protection policies, that was another action item. Well, we, we have. We brought in a fraud risk assessment, and that's, actually, I just found out today, they're still doing some work up at the schools. But, on the town side, they've done all of the assessments for all the departments. And we're now implementing department by department action items. And it's, again, this is identifying, not fraud itself, but risk of fraud. And how to identify procedures to help mitigate potential risks. And we can talk more about that as we get into the spring. We can have to do an update on it. But that's, we've, we've already done stage, stage one is now complete and now it's staged, except with the schools, they're doing it, they're all a little more complicated. But stage two is in place here on the town side.
Right.
Now, on the selectmen's side, the same, same kind of points. Continue progress on identifying and addressing future liabilities. Well, obviously, OPEP strategy is something we talk about regularly. Your second point, prudent budget message development and adoption. Well, you did, September 22nd, 2015, you adopted it. So, you hit your, hit your targets. Undone review of financial policies, well, that's something we talk about, if not at every meeting, pretty consistently. So, there's most certainly been a robust conversation. So, I think that's an ongoing item. We haven't adopted anything recently, but that's, it's still part of an ongoing conversation. Enhanced service delivery, and again, I've shrunk that down a little bit, we'll break into pieces. Building and infrastructure assessment was a big subheading here. First one, analyze space needs for town programs and services. The MAPC, as I've discussed, has been retained and they've started the analysis. The first round of site visits and interviews took place in November. They'll kind of come back for a second round in January. They've given us, Brian and I, some initial, some, some very draft notes about, you know, of their initial observations. And they're gonna be turning that into a robust second round analysis and report. So, that's, that's underway.
And this is gonna be very specifically, what kind of physical space we need to operate our various departments as?
What we have, what we might, what we have, what works.
Yep.
What doesn't work, you know, both from a safety point and from a service point of view.
Yep.
And a kind of a priority, a recommended priority attack list.
Right.
So, again, so this feeds right into the second point, which is develop a five to 10-year billing infrastructure assessment. Well, the space analysis we'll be doing afterwards. And it's gonna help us tee up, well, where do we need to talk? You know, town hall, public safety, DPW. Obviously, the schools will, will wrap into this. I mean, you know, a lot of work had been done on those, but in the next five years, you know, we're not that far out. We'll be, you know, talking about the rooms and we'll talk about windows and boilers. So, we actually had preliminary conversations a year ago about that, just to see where we were. So, we're, we're prepared to continue this conversation. Third was develop a road infrastructure maintenance plan. We've been doing that on a very, on a more specific level basis, but on a higher end basis, we're working, rolling something out hopefully early in 2016. A little more elaborate plan. So, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, you've seen me, I think, if it was a neighboring town or whatever it is, they were actually reviewing a, a plan for streets and roads. They were actually reviewing a, um, a plan for streets and roads. It was called, you know, a street and road plan, where they went through all the, are we gonna do something that, it seems to me we, we ought to do that, we ought, well, what would be stopping us then?
It, it, it's, it's not, it's not so much, there's any resistance to it. It's that it takes time to stop and plan, and, and our guys have been going, just in the winter, non-stop, and the, then the, then the repair. We had a very robust paving schedule this, this fall, I think you've all seen that. And then, you know, what happens like yesterday? Well, there was a, an accidental water main break. So, on a day with, which might otherwise have been spent sitting in, in the office, Brian spent his entire, most of his day in the field. So, and Carl's guys were out there too, helping with that.
Well, is this something that would benefit from an outside, you know, we get some outside experts to come in? I mean, why did the DPW doesn't have to do this plan, we could have some, cause we're just studying and counting the roads and so forth. Couldn't we have sort of an expert, whoever this, you know, these towns have, and Maestro just completed one, or some neighboring town, come in and evaluate? Could we do that? Is that expensive or prohibited that way?
No, no, we, we, we've been having those conversations, and I, I do hope that if we have a few more weeks of this kind of winter weather, that we'll have some time early in January to put on paper our plan to put, to go forward. I think I talked to some of you individually, there's some, some cool technology that's out there. Um, I would, we don't buy, but to lease that does road, physical road infrastructure mapping. There are some other communities that have, you know, retained some folks, my prior community was doing that when I left. To have someone come in and do a, a pavement analysis, to go around and look at the entire town. We need, we need to, we need to do.
I happened to go down a street the other day that, uh, I won't name the street, but it was really, looked rather incongruous to the rest of the town. I don't know if there are other streets, almost not, I mean, you're bumping your car up and down to do it, so. I don't know how many streets we have like that, but I really don't think we should have any unless I'm missing something.
Well, the challenge, the challenge that co-hazard has, and it's, it's a conversation we're gonna have to have, is that a third of our ways are private, they're not public, right? Uh, and again, you happen to live in one of them, uh, yours is a little different. But a number of them, uh, were never built to public standards and have never been maintained. I mean, I, I, there was never, never a vehicle created, whether it be a homeowners association or whatever, to maintain the vehicle, uh, the, the roadways. And I know of one in particular, by the way, we're dealing with the residents on one particular street, I won't name, trying to help them forward. Uh, another street turned out to be a public way after all, so we addressed that one.
This is, uh, if I may, I want to divert this conversation for a second, because it, because it needs to be, uh, readdressed. This has been a topic of, of the boards for at least two years, uh, setting, setting up a private way policy, okay? And the policy in this case would be, uh, a matter of addressing private ways as they exist, and I, as I, as I envision it, um, framing a discussion around which the town uh, might or might never assist in either the maintenance, uh, or, or even reconstruction of roadways. Now, I say that not to open up the possibility that we're suddenly going into the recreation of, uh, of private ways, but rather that there are some public interests in the, in, in those private ways being maintained, not the least of which is the passage of, of public safety vehicles, um, the safety of the residents and so on. There, there are a, a number of considerations, which I, I openly admit, uh, are beyond my comprehension at the moment, and probably several of us on the board are lacking that basic information. But that's the background material that we need to have, in order to have a, in order to complete a worthwhile conversation on this. So, I'm not trying to cut off the conversation now, but rather point out that I think it deserves, uh, merits its, uh, its own meeting time, probably several. And, uh, so let's plan on queuing that up for, um, I guess it's late January.
I think like some of the other things that we've been able to tackle, for the first time, we have a DPW structure that we didn't have before, which is allowing us to have these conversations. We have everybody under one umbrella, and we have a procurement person in, in place, and so we're now able, I think, to tackle some of these questions. There were, there were questions, the, the, the private-public way issue is not new, it's been a co-hazard issue since seventeen seventy.
It's been, it's been a Massachusetts issue, but this is not unique to us, but I mean, as an example.
I've never seen a place without so many.
A policy, a policy that might logically address this is, you know, for the future, is, is, um, putting together a, you know, a, a code for, for private ways, and that, I may be using improper terminology, and this may be the type of thing that would be better reviewed and sponsored by the, the planning board. But the result of it is, if we have non-conforming roadways, uh, and we don't have some sort of construction policy for that, you know, it's, it's completely unfair for the taxpayers of the town as a whole, in the DPW, to try and address something that frankly, never met a standard of theirs anyway. You know, if we were to do that, and that, that's, that's, that, that on its own is a bit of a head-scratcher. We can't reverse what's taken place in the past, but we can certainly affect what might take place in the future.
Well, I think we actually have to address, I mean, the problem is we, we're being forced to address decisions that were made fifteen, twenty, or thirty years ago.
What, what I mean by that is that it's, it's, it's unlikely that we can go back and say, okay, all private ways must meet this criteria, because the land might not exist. It may, it may force us into land-taking, so that's where.
There are some private ways, Fair Oaks being one example, that were functionally built to subdivision standards. If, 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 if town meeting wanted to accept something like that into the public way system, it would be fairly simple. There are some others that, that aren't ever going to be able to be accepted. They're never, they're not, they're, they're, they just can't. Uh, there are, there are so people, by the way, who don't want them to be. There are people, some that live on private ways that don't want them to be anything other than private way. They don't want a public right of access. If an ambulance comes to their house, it's one thing, they don't want the FedEx using it as a cut through from one place to another or something like.
Cause wherever the road is, the public is going along it, so this street that I was on the other day, even though I'm not a resident there, I may travel down that road, and it was somewhat hazardous, and there are others too, apparently. Just, I agree that even Steve said that we need to take a little global approach and so, I just, he said, I want to sort of emphasize that one of the basic things that, you know, people look to for their government is, is things, you know, it's not exciting, it's not, but, you know, it obviously can get overlooked, but it's, you know, the paving of the roads and keeping of the lights and maintaining, uh, you know, just a basic, very basic function of government, and, you know.
No, and I couldn't agree anymore. Defend my shores, deliver my mail.
Right, exactly, and it's, uh, that's what people, well, some, with some people, it's all they want from the government, that's a different discussion. But it is, we all agree that the government should be doing that, and, and, um, we shouldn't have that if it's very widespread in co-hazard. I don't know, I am traveling all the roads, but the road I was on was similar to Fair Oaks Lane, only it was a disaster to drive down, you know, and I.
I think our public ways are in fairly good shape right now.
It seems to me, yeah, right.
But again, as I said, a third of the ways in town are private, I mean, a full third of. Uh, so again, I, we'll, we'll look to, to, maybe the second meeting of January is to.
Received a, a kind of a list of all the accepted roads and the private ways. It wasn't a hundred percent clear. Is there a codex that has all of them, according to what's been accepted in the town meeting?
Um, well, that's another reality. That's, that's an excellent question. Um, no.
Lambert's Lane was, and that was the old cow passion.
Right, 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 as it turns out, that was indeed a public way, right, but it had, it, it had fallen out of regular use, cause its primary purpose went away. And then, it went from, the community reverted, and there were some homes up there that were pri, very large private estates, and nobody, they didn't want anyone on the road. So they made it look like a private way for a very, for, for, the, the, that's very complicated. So, what we, what we're trying to develop, and it's something that I, I think we're gonna try to do early in the year too, is we have this GIS platform now, this, you know, geographic information system, uh, electronic mapping. We want to get a road layer in there. Public Works has a nice set of records about paving and all. The problem, of course, it's all on paper. And they keep these wonderful elaborate paperwork, but I can't see them here, and no, no one else can either, so we want to get that inputted, and then fill in the gaps. Quite frankly, you know, the town has not, in its two hundred and fifty years, kept perfect records on a lot of these things. They just, they just haven't. So, you know, I, I couldn't tell you today, I hope the records exist, and when was Highland Ave, the road the town hall sits on, created? When was it last repaired? It's, even in my own, my own old community, which was heavily developed post-World War Two, so a lot of those records still existed to one extent or another. Some of the roads, they were built a hundred years before that, and it wasn't clear, the town, that, that the town had title, I mean, they were, they're, clearly the road was there, and it's been, been, been maintained since eighteen seventy-three or something, but, so I, I think we want to develop some of that here. And also, this town has a very unusual development pattern, you know, it's, this is very, there's a lot of these pork chop lots, which confuse how a road might go and, so, but, well, well, it's clearly on the list, and it's something that I think that we, we need to tee up. Um, continuing this, um, one of the other points was identifying grant funding opportunities, well, here's three, one which Kevin mentioned earlier, right, the green communities, a hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty, just announced today.
It's pretty, you got that up already?
I got that up, I got that.
It was only announced a few hours ago.
Yes, I'm, I'm fast, that's a big number.
Do you have a fiber off the cable somewhere?
So, uh, the MAPC, uh, is providing us four thousand dollars as part of our master plan scoping, the, the project that's gonna start in January. So it was another, uh, piece of money, and in fact, the, I didn't put it up here, but the, uh, the space analysis that has been fully funded by them, so.
That's great.
So that's probably another twenty thousand in value that we're getting, um, and though it's not a, we're not getting, we don't have an official dollar about. And then there's been other grants, Wellness, I think we talked about the other day, received a grant. Public Safety just received a, a grant through MYA, through our insurance, and Elder Affairs has been getting a series of small grants, so there's ongoing projects.
Do we have, as a, um, do we have like a grant writing, I think we didn't discuss this board, do we have a grant writing? That almost could be a full-time focus, let us say, a focus, uh, you know what I'm getting at. I mean, you see, there's so many opportunities for grants that towns can get, that we, uh, almost you could have someone dedicated to just doing that kind of skill. That must be a basic skill. What do we do in that area?
Well, it's funny, that, that actually came up at the MAPC meeting I was at last week. Um, and all of us said the same thing. We'd love to be able to track these things, but none of us have the ability to have a full-time person doing it. So the MAPC is looking to see how they might, which, we're gonna be doing a session on that, uh, early in the new year, I, I, to talk about how communities can collaborate on that. So, this is a, yeah, cause I mean, it's the same, it's the same for all of us. We do get contacted, we do watch, I mean, the big, the big things, you know, um, the schools obviously track a lot of big stuff. Uh, we look for, um, you know, we look for, for grants, at Public Works and, and, and Elder Affairs is a very, you know, they're, they're, they're hock-like, looking at their, at, at what's out there. Public, you know, we, we, we get, we have some grant opportunities through our insurance, you know, we save money, we get, we get the ability to tap into grants. But no, there's no central point of focus on it, and I think that it's a great collaborative kind of effort, uh, cause and there's also, by the way, collaborative money out there, the, the Baker administration's trying to make available, so. It's definitely something we totally talk about. So we, we do track it on a very as-needed basis. Uh, but I think it's something we can get more robust, but it is a conversation we just had, so. I'd love to be able to collaborate with other communities on something like that. Work with the Housing Authority and other relevant committees to assess housing needs, well, it's another conversation we've been having. So, the Affordable Housing Trust discussion began in the fall, it's gonna continue into next year. Uh, this discussion about trying to get a two thousand, early two thousand and sixteen community meeting together on affordable housing, so that's clearly in the board's wheelhouse right now, uh, so it's something, the conversation's already started. Don't know where it's, it's never really gonna end, but it's, it's been teed up. The conversation's been teed up. Human resources, this is another piece of the enhanced service delivery. First point was to report the selectman's performance management activity. We did. So Elder Affairs and Fire both came in meetings, we did presentations in the fall. We're gonna do further updates on those coming up in the second quarter, when we get some more data. We talked about doing that in the late spring.
We, we're gonna do other departments?
Well, again, I think with co-hazard connects, we'll be able to do some reporting on Public Works, something we couldn't do before, cause we weren't, we didn't data-track. Now, some of it is, we don't, you know, we, we don't have any debt, we don't have any software for billing, so we get inspection, so we get reports, cause they do track them in Excel. With a fiber, with a fiber system and a town enhanced network, we can do a lot more, so. Evaluate and plan for optimal staff organizational structure. That's something we do ongoing, but two key ones I want to mention. There's a DPW regorg that was approved at town meeting, has now been implemented, it's functioning smoothly now. There have, there have been some, some skips in there, as we've tried to integrate pieces in, and then we find where, you know, we need to do a little bit more here or there, but that's, so, we actually have, the space has now been consolidated, we kind of did a big giant musical, very slow-moving musical office chairs, so Public Works is now all back office on the second floor. Uh, Inspection Services is now relocated, they're all on the first floor, all together for the first time. So I don't know if you've been down there, if you wanna poke your head into buildings. Um, Bob Egan did a great job coming in a couple nights and weekends, and there's a new door. They connect the two offices, so, uh, and there's a new, there's now a conference table that's been set up, and, and Conservation and Health now share what had been wrecked. So now, under one roof, you can come in and get all your permitting taken care of. Uh, and, and you don't have to, where's the health inspector? Well, she's in the field. She's not, you know, you don't have to walk from one end of the building to the other in finance, and she's not there, or, um, so Susan keeps a much better record, you know, Susan's actually very accessible, but the point is, it's all there, and now they have a table, and they meet regularly. So one of the things that wasn't happening, you know, permits have to be touched by multiple departments, and they may be departments of one. Well, now, they're meeting regularly on particularly robust issues that had never happened before. So that's beginning, so, um, that, 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 that's, and there's also other meetings, I've talked about before, doing these human service side meetings, about how we can cross-collaborate with seniors and RAC and library. Those are ongoing as well. Establish professional development strategies. Well, Lisa's been really, uh, you know, deep in this. She's working with all of our unions on evaluation protocols, and with departments and myself, so the, the goal is to get those in place before the end of fiscal sixteen. And for example, so, we redid the job descriptions for Tracy and Jen here. Built-in their job descriptions are now staff development hours. You know, it's, it's not so much a week, but it's really so much added up a month. Well, you know, for, for, maybe just something as simple as an Excel training class, or maybe it's going to an off-site program, or, you know, whatever we, we work on, but we, it's a critical thing, the route to build, I think, into people's programs.
So I had to just set that up and get that going, or some?
Well, we, we have, we started right here. Uh, and again, you know, some of the offices already do some of this stuff, I mean, uh, you know, Police and Fire have mandatory training, so that, that's, that's a little different. Um, but I, I, I know that, um, Paula and, Paula, Lenars and Mary Quill have been very big on getting their staff, their professional staff up and trained, and I, as you know, I, is there any next point? Ten major committees, I sent me credentially, well, as I announced in September, I, I became an official ICMA credential manager, so I've now completed that part of my training. Now, that's, I get the nice pin, which I forgot to wear tonight, uh, for my lapel, but it's an ongoing commitment. It's an annual professional development commitment, which you've signed on to as well, and that's forty hours a year plus. Now, that doesn't mean I have to be off-site at a conference, not though that's, that's a piece of it. It's also just developing myself, working with other staff, reading, it's not routine work, it has to be above and beyond that, so. I've done a lot of that, and, and it's been good for me, and I, actually, I've, I've had a chance to take things at a different perspective, and I'm getting different things out of programs that I might have otherwise gotten, and I think it's been very helpful, so. Uh, it's good for me, it's good for all of our staff. Again, it's, it's important for, for Tracy and Jen, for example, to get staff developers, and for me, it's maybe different programming. But it's, it's now a priority that we're trying to. Okay, procurement improvements, so, this, this was kind of, you hadn't put this into, into HR, but I kind of broke it out. So, uh, it's, it wasn't explicitly listed, but I think it makes sense to break it out. So procurement system upgrades, um, well, we have the contract procurement manager. She was hired, she's in place, and she's been working feverishly on policy and procedure development. I, I've been signing off, I signed off on three contracts in the last two days. Things that, you know, had never, were never fully in place before. She's aggressively working on, on, uh, colla, kind of consolidating how we do things. Not to have been some bumps, but, you know, we're getting there, and we're now about to embark on this whole state combine, this whole breaking in a way that we never did into the whole state procurement world, and buying off state contracts where it makes effective sense in the town. So she's set up a lot of that, which is great. Another point you've all raised is contracted services. Uh, one of the things that our procurement managers were working on is getting contracts in place for professional services that did not exist, where they may have lost. Conservation, which is one example of that, and the interview process on that is underway, by the way. We've, we've had a series of interviews. Uh, we're gonna be placing some finalist candidates in front of the board, Conservation Commission, in January, to get their input.
Is this a, um, a full-time element, or?
No, I'd say it's a part-time position.
Part-time position, okay, thank you.
It might evolve, but at the moment, it's part-time.
No, that's, that, that's all, I just wanted clarification on.
Uh, and RFPs, so the things we've talked about, so ambulance billing, bond counts, financial advisor, all teed up for first quarter twenty sixteen, so I'm putting a date on there. And you're gonna come back and tell me, okay, where are they, great. So, um, uh, I have drafts of, of two of, actually, we have drafts of all three of them, so it's just now a matter of just pushing them out the door, so, um, those are, those are.
What's the financial advisor do?
Uh, the financial advisor advises on bond issues and things.
So that's illegal?
Uh, no, it's more financial. They, they do, think of it as kind of a, you know, if you have a personal financial advisor, the town's financial advisor plays a similar role, when you do investing, which we don't really do very much of.
Primarily it's structuring the bonds. So, as an example, it, there are times when it's more attractive to, uh, the bond marketplace to put out a bond at a premium, that is to say, a higher coupon rate. And because of that, the, you'll, you'll take in more money than a hundred cents on the dollar borrow. Um, there are still other times when they're gonna come, come back and recommend that you don't take a bonding item out over twenty years, but you, you retract it to ten, because frankly, it's the least expensive portion of the, of the borrowing curve, so. That's the type, among the types of things that the advisor will do, and they'll also turn around and market your, your bond offering to, uh, to dealers. So, they're, they, they may hold an auction, uh, they, they may hold a negotiation, depending upon our policies. Uh, and they'll advise as to what they think will fetch the best price for us. Best, best price for us means lowest borrowing cost.
Doesn't necessarily mean we're gonna change, by the way. We could end up sticking with the same folks we have, but they're just good policy to do this every so often. And we don't want to do them all at the same time, either. We want to have some, somebody be staggered, so we haven't really ever done some of these, so. We gotta start, and then we gotta start, and we'll, we'll stagger these, I think, over time. But so these are the ones I think, the ambulance billing we need to do, just because we need to do it, um, so. So that's procurement. Uh, the next is advanced current town priorities. So here are a few ones that were kind of big. Bring ninety-one Sawyer Street to resolution. Wow, the agreement's been ratified by everybody. Petitions, uh, in the legal system and a transition plan for Elder Affairs and Town Oversight is underway. Elder Affairs has relocated, now they're in their office space. The Town Oversight Plan is continuing to evolve as we get our arms around the building, so we've done a lot of work on that, um, so that's well in its way, so, um, it's not done, by the way, in some ways, none of this is ever done, but we've, we've made light years of progress, so. Bring the space lease to our world to resolution. It has been done, town meeting approved, the lease buyout, the recreations relocated to the new space, as you heard from Carolyn Coffey a little earlier today, uh, in this meeting, Library, we're gonna be collaborating on an improvement plan, and they're going in front of the CPC for some funding for appliance, so, that's all very good news. Engage relevant individual committees, well, here's four examples that I've been engaged in directly. Alternative Energy on the Green Communities Initiative, which we now know, we, we are now been approved for. Uh, and the landfill solar project, which is an ongoing issue, um, the feds, by the way, have just, uh, ex- Congress approved a ca- uh, a, a, a continuation of the, the tax benefits, so that's, that's good news. Now, we have to wait for, Garrett Bradley, uh, didn't mention, uh, last week, that he thinks that the state will pick it up. And that they will extend the cap, explore the caps, so, you know, but it's still ongoing work to be done with that, well, I've been working, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I just had a question on the landfill, I just remembered, uh, where are we in terms of rejiggering the different units and decommissioning, or whatever the word is?
The, 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 the capping permit is still in progress. Uh, we're discussing changing the lot lines, right now, the, the land, it sits on three parcels.
Right.
Uh, so we're exploring, Brian and I were talking about this just last week, about what to do, and I met with Joanne Pilsak about the process for that.
To pass it down.
So these are, again, these are, these are things that flow out of this, this conversation.
Is that, is the, is, is creating one parcel out of three, if that's?
Yeah, it's possible.
A discussion, is that something that would go through, go to town meeting in the spring?
No, doesn't have to, there's just plenty of work, this is, this is purely administrative.
Thank you.
Um, I'm gonna skip as, as I do my talking, so I'll, I'll reward myself after. Meeting with the advisor committee, they're going through a leadership transitions, I met with a new chair last week, and I'm gonna be with her on a regular basis. And the school committees, you know, I've been engaged with them on the contract, it's not even ours, so, uh, those are some examples, so I've, 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 I've continued to be pretty directly engaged with a variety of committees and, and members as we go. Fourth big priority is supporting a selectman in your, exactly. So, uh, you know, the master plan is something we've talked about, right, so that, the scoping was funded at special time meeting. The MAPC's been retained to do the work on the scoping session, and the steering committee, something that, uh, will hopefully come to view early in twenty sixteen to a point of standing, I know that this has been some conversations taking place, um, with Clark Brewer, the chairman of the planning board, to move that forward, so, I am actively working on your behalf on that issue. Refine the strength of the committee structure, uh, I can tell you that ensuring full membership is, I think, something we've been doing regularly, you get regular updates as to what is open, and who applies, um, you've gone through the, the, the protocol on assignments of liaisons piece. Um, the first piece, I think, is something that's kind of ongoing, uh, reviewing existing town committees to ensure charges and priorities. So I think that's, that's, you know, you tell me what you need or want me to do, but that's something that's still on, up on your, your wheelhouse.
I definitely think the committee structure, the whole committee discussion could be a part of a meeting, you know, maybe in February or something, whenever it makes sense, but, um, I know the master plan, um, you know, we're gonna have to have a discussion about appointing a steering committee for the master plan, and a lot of the kind of representation that a master plan steering committee might benefit by would, would be like an economic development commi- committee, which we don't have, so, you know, maybe it's just finding somebody that could serve with that, that hat on, um, without necessarily the committee being recharged. But that's just something for us to discuss going forward sometime soon.
We've been talking about protecting enhanced financial health, I think we've talked about that a lot, the building infrastructure assessment, we've talked about. The communications plan, I think the one big piece remains that training program for new committee members, that's something that's still in, in progress. Now, I added up fifth point, these are other things that weren't listed before, but most certainly have been important. Completed the hiring process for the permanent police chief, obviously, that's now checked off the list. I've been very active in managing, well, I should say, I've been managing a lot of active litigation. So that's something that's taken up a fair amount of time. Uh, working with the Harbor Master on the dredging project oversight, uh, that's, uh, definitely something that's been a big priority this, uh, this last six months. The DPW, uh, work on the FEMA loan, where the letter of map provision, obviously, that kind of popped up and became very robust, and, and obviously, we, that's now in filed, so we're now, we're hope, we're fingers crossed, we're hoping to get some update. Now, something that's new, that's kinda becoming on your radar screen, is working with the local arts and business community on something called the Cohasset Cultural District, so you'll be hearing more about that, but that's something that's now becoming a, uh, a, a, a real desire, I think, of the business and, and cultural community here. That'll be popping up on the agenda early in January, so. Um, so, progress across the board on goals and objectives, I think it's been broad and deep, I really do think the last six months have been very, very active. I can't say that a lot, that a bunch of stuff is completed, but we, we're moving. So, we, really, we haven't left stuffs behind, it's about a lot of ongoing conversations. Now, that, that's not to say there isn't work to do, so here's some things, uh, these are just some highlights. Uh, rolling out an enhanced external communication resource plan, that's something that's on my, on my list for early twenty sixteen. Scoping work on the master plan, obviously, that's gonna begin with your appointment of the master plan steering committee, and a couple of aspects that I think you've been very eager to talk about are economic development and open space maintenance enhancements, I think those have been, I mean, those aren't the only ones, but those are things that the board has brought up before, that I'm just putting back in front of you. Development of municipal space plan, well, it's gonna come out of the space analysis study, I think, though, that, that's, that's a second half, um, priority. Advocacy for the improved IT network and telecommunications system, obviously, we've talked about that tonight, that's gonna come in front of all of you in the spring, and we've got to make some decisions on that. Roll out of committee training, something, again, you tell me how, I can work with you to help get that up and, and going, um, and again, this, here's three points, there's another one I forgot to put on air that I'll mention. Affordable housing, obviously, something you wanna tee up, BYOB, that's something we wanna have a conversation about. You've started a conversation, I think you wanna continue it early in the new year, event policy, gotta put a bow on that. Uh, the classic twenty twenty, the two hundred and fifty anniversary, um, also teeing up a committee, first round of committee appointment for, for early twenty sixteen, to get that going. So, I'm putting that on your radar screen, I didn't put that on here, I forgot to add that, but I'm putting it up for you now, so, I mean, though, these are not the only things, but these are, I think, are things that fit right within the wheelhouse of things you've talked about and things that you've assigned, so, um, so that's, uh, that's the update, so. I hope that, uh.
That's a, uh, that's quite a summary, um, and it's helpful for, I think, the town to see what actually has been accomplished, what's moved along, um, and what remains to be done just in the, the near-term scope that I, I think, uh, the work on the master plan itself, uh, brings rise to discussions on everything from affordable housing to open space policies. It, it will address. And the, the impact on our technology structure, public safety, et cetera, et cetera, creating ever more work, so, um, and I just, I, I, first of all, would like to congratulate, uh, your staff, um, because the, you know, the last, the last two years have been, uh, two years of enormous evolution for them. Whether it's, uh, with respect to management style or reorganizations, um, the introduction to, uh, a structure that towns never had. And yet, the, the staff has done it with, uh, exceptional grace and professionalism, and I, from my perspective, and I just say this for myself, they've really met the, you know, met the goal, met the mark, and, and at the same time stepped up the game. There is a, um, an element of organization to both the, the work that, uh, they conduct and, uh, and, and the things that they achieve, uh, which frankly, I haven't seen here ever. So, that, I, that's, that's the nature of my, uh, my congratulatory message. And I think frankly, that, you know, that comes back to, you know, to, to those elements that you brought in with you. And your, your transition here wasn't all that easy either. Arriving in a snowstorm, and, and I think you probably thought through the last year, you probably might never get out of snowstorms. So, I, I just, I, I have to say that the, uh, that seeing this review for, for the board is a helpful reminder of all that has been done, um, much of which we were, we were actively engaged in, uh, from the perspective of identifying the needs and the objectives. But the actual boots on the ground and the work being done is, uh, you know, is a testament to, to you and the entire staff of the town. As well as, as well as the committees and the like, so.
No, no, I appreciate that, and I really do think that, again, this is, this is a, I've said, I said this when, when I interviewed with you two, two years ago. Government is a, is a team sport, and I, I just, I'm not doing that just to make a cool sports analogy, I mean, it really is, and, and I've been very, very great, very fortunate, not only in harrying some really great people, but to get them all working in a way that, that makes this fun every day. I've been fortunate to man some new staff who really just complemented that structure, uh, whether it be Ron with IT, or Susan with health, uh, or Chrissy downstairs in, in buildings, and, and again, uh, I wasn't involved in every single piece of their recruitment, some of the, the big ones, most certainly, but, Chrissy, I'm, you know, I had a great team that brought her on, Lisa, in HLR, uh, and, and as a result, I think, um, you know, we're really, you know, I, I had some time, we had our old house staff event today for the holidays. And some people, you know, one very longstanding per- folk, uh, staffer came to me and said that she felt like she hasn't felt in, you know, in, in ten years. I mean, she really was very excited, and, and she really thinks that we've had, we have a great thing going, and, uh, not that it's, I mean, there are moments, I mean, you know, uh, there's gonna be snowstorms, there's gonna be problems, there's gonna be a water main break, um, and it's still things we have to improve, I most certainly know that. But, uh, I think we have the right, we're in, going in the right direction, and, and that's, and it do a very large measure to the guidance and leadership you were giving as well, um, so.
Completely separate item, um, and it's just, it's a personal memory. Years ago, um, the, the question arose, uh, with respect to management letters on our, uh, you know, our annual audit. And it turned out that no one had read them, and, uh, you know, so the previous boards, going back about, uh, four or five years, began to review with the auditor in public. And, uh, you know, over the last couple of years, we've actually made an enormous amount of progress addressing the deficiencies, some of them material. Many of them minor, but one of them with, which you had brought up tonight, which was simply reviewing, view, reviewing our functions for risk of fraud, I mean, and not that we suspected, we just, you look for the risk. Which interestingly enough, it may seem perverse, but that's actually a protection for the town's employees. If you put procedures into place, no one can, can, uh, point an unwarranted finger. And that's, I mean, it turns out to be, uh, the best protection that, that they can get, and frankly, um, you know, a- as in any uh, small organization, and I mean small by the, the head count, you can get accusations flying around needlessly and, un- un- needlessly and, and at the same time maliciously. Frankly, I love to see those policies in place, and it just brings to a head the, uh, the many observations that our, our current and past auditors have had, but never went addressed. And now, I think, to an item, I, I, I believe they are almost entirely, uh, addressed. Now, I hope he doesn't come up with some more, but.
Well, you, we talked about it a couple of weeks.
I'm sorry, I cut you off.
No, I, I just basically wanted to echo what you said, and, and I think finally, uh, you know, the, the balance has, is, is working really well, with respect to what we're doing in terms of setting goals and objectives and staying at the policy level, and, you know, I, it, there are days that I feel like I, you know, I haven't, like, well, I used to work so much harder to be a selectman, well, I, I, I shouldn't be having to work that hard, and, because now we have the professional staff and the management structure to, to do a lot of this work, um, because, and we're properly staying, um, you know, up where we should be in the, in the policy level, and sitting here and discussing things together, um, not necessarily working, um, the, getting these goals and objectives carried out, so, kudos to you and to the staff, um, and, uh, you know, one thing I do wanna bring up is, um, Chris is close to his two-year mark, and I think at some point, we should discuss what's next, and, um, in terms of whether it's mini, we do, we do a review, and, we do that in June. Or at the end of fiscal year.
Well, one of the things I'd like to, I, I'd ask the board to keep in mind is that, um, uh, Chris's contract, employment contract with the town, uh, was initiated in January out of necessity. Okay, so it wasn't, it wasn't pre-dated, and it wasn't post-dated, it, it structurally sits in January, which puts us at a.
In fiscal year.
Uh, yeah, out of, out of phase, if you will, with fiscal year, and frankly, from a contractual standpoint, um, not something I'm real crazy about. And secondarily, I, it, it, Chris, it's a public meeting, and, and it's not on the agenda, so, I'm, I wanna be careful with, with respect to how far we go with this, uh, and the board has not held a vote on it either. Uh, but I would like to propose to the board that we, um, initiate a discussion with Chris with respect to a contract extension. Uh, and what I envision by discussing a contract extension is, um, very simply, um, discussing amongst ourselves our, our desire to move, uh, to move forward and continue to, to work with our town manager. I do believe that it makes sense, uh, to work with your talent before their contract expiration. No offense, Chris, but I'd rather take the lever out of your hands and put it in ours. And, uh, and, I, I think we've had, uh, in my, again, in my opinion, um, uh, we've had, uh, very successful couple of years, uh, and, and, in large part, that success has come, uh, to our town uh, through the assistance and guidance with a, a professional manager in Chris. So, um, I'd like you to consider it, I don't wanna, I don't wanna have it as a discussion, because it's not a topic on the agenda, but I would like to put it on the agenda and, and ideally, um, you know, think about putting together a, a subcommittee to work on this particular item. All right? Okay, um, that would, it, it, I'm, I'm thinking, again, this is probably a January topic. All right, um, and, uh, I recognize that puts us a year ahead of schedule, but as I said, I want, I'd rather have the leather, the lever in our hands as opposed to yours, you know. Start playing for contract, it gets expensive. Oh, come on, that's good.
Awesome, I'm happy to give the lever, I'm happy.
All right.
So, uh, just, uh, just two more quick things for me, so, um, I am going to take some time between Christmas and New Year's. Uh, I am going to officially appoint Chief Sylvia to be signatory, uh, warrants and all. I will only be a few hours away, so I'm, I'm not gonna be incommunicado, but, uh, so if anything does happen, um, I will be available, and I'll stay in touch with everybody. Uh, but I will not, I do not plan to be in the office, I'll be in tomorrow, then I'll be gone pretty much from Christmas Eve through New Year's weekend. I might pop into town, but I'm gonna try not to come to the office, in fact, I've been ordered by some staff not to come in.
How about, how about the board's selectmen order you that?
Um, so I'm just letting you know that, and then, uh, we, I just wanna wish, oh, I wanna thank all of you again, and wish all of you and your families and everyone out there in Cohasset a merry, merry Christmas, and happy new year and happy holidays.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And to my, uh, to my board, uh, the only other item remaining is topics not reasonably anticipated by the chairman, forty-eight hours in advance, and I have none.
Thank you.
All right, and so we're two minutes ahead of schedule, not the half hour I was hoping for, but, uh, not bad. Does anyone wanna make a motion for adjournment?
I'm so moved.
A second?
Okay, well, if this passes, I'll see you all next year.
That's right.
All right, all those in favor of adjournings? Aye?
Aye.